All right, I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, November 29th at 4:00 PM. Could I have, well, let's say 4:02 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Teresa A. Moss, present.
Chad Sexton Duranian, present.
And Veronica Cal, present. This is an abbreviated meeting. I'd like to announce that it is being taped recorded. I believe it's live on Channel 9 and it will be posted on the YouTube channel after the fact. 1.3 chairman's additions or deletions. I have two additions. I'd like to add 5.0, the town administrator's update, and 5.3 announcements. So are both of you good with that?
I am.
I am, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. There are no appointments for hearings, no appointments of officials or personnel. So our first item is 4.1 to accept the bid for the Greenville Road Bridge replacement. And for that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Eric.
I'm actually wondering if you might be able to pull up and share. It's in the SharePoint. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at it. The official review of the bids from our engineer that indicated that the low bidder Shepco Incorporated met all the qualifications and they reviewed the bids and they were all copacetic. And so it was the recommendation of the engineer and also would be my recommendation that the Board of Selectmen accept the low bid of Shepco Incorporated to construct the Greenville Road Bridge. I believe at the end of the day, the total bid amount was $753,000 and change. I apologize, I didn't print out that document. No more printing. Yes. So that's the amount that was certified by the engineers, by our contracted engineer. And I would request that the board authorize me to enter into a contract with, and then sign a contract with Shepco for the bridge construction.
Okay, give me just one minute. Is it the bid evaluation?
It is. So just by way, while Veronica's pulling up, by way of explanation, we originally went out to bid with this and got bids in at the end of September. However, there was an error in the low bidder's documents. And after consultation with council, we made the determination that though we thought that the bid would be defensible if we accepted it, rather than get into somebody challenging the bid, we would just go out to bid again with identical specs. So we did go out to bid again with identical specs. They came back. Those bids were opened on the 3rd of November. And as you can see, the three low bidders are listed there on the document. The low bid by Shepco Incorporated was evaluated by Green, who was our engineer. And so we would recommend that that be the bid that the town accepted in a new contract.
All right. Are there any questions, Chad or Teresa?
I don't have any questions, Madam Chair.
I do not.
All right, is there a motion? Nor do I have any questions. Is there a motion to accept the bid by Shepco Inc. for the Greenville Road Bridge replacement?
I make a motion that we accept the bid from... I forgot who.
Shepco Inc.
Medco Inc?
Shepco. S-H-E-P-C-O.
Sepco, there it is. Sepco Inc. Do I need to mention the amount?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And is that the 754333? Okay. I make a motion that we accept the bid for Shepco Inc. in the amount of 7454333 for the Greenville Bridge construction.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All right.
I want to thank, I definitely want to thank Eric for helping us out with this. This has been a while that it's been on our plate. And thank you, Eric, for your direction in this. And I also want to thank the bidders. I know that this is done with the town in mind. So I appreciate everybody's work on this. Jim, Jim Smith as well, and his horde of people over there at the maintenance barn.
I would agree with that. So did Teresa vote already?
No. Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, so that was 4.1. 4.2 is to review the request for the Friends of the Library van. So let me, I'm gonna share again, I guess. The Friends of the Library is seeking approval to use the Council on Aging van for transportation to the holiday fair. So this is, it will be driven by a Townsend Council on Aging staff driver. The costs will be split evenly between the Friends of the Council on Aging and the Friends of the Library. And specific stops will be determined by the Council on Aging Transportation Administrator. This is for December 10th, so they have a little bit of time if we approve in order to figure out the stops and get that posted on various webpages and Facebook pages. And it has been approved by both the COA Director, by both, by the COA Director, Farin Moore, by Karen Clement for the Friends of the Townsend Library, and Peter Buckston for the Friends of the Townsend Seamen's. So we are at the final approval. So any discussion on this?
I'm just, has the fair used to always be at the council, at the library? Did they move it to the high school? Is this why they need the transportation?
No, it is still at the Senior Center Library complex there. So it's just if the parking overruns, which sometimes it does, and depending on any events that might be going on at Hawthorne Brokerage, Swanacook during that time, one of the stops could be the Hawthorne Brokerage, Swanacook parking lot, even though you can walk down there if you're able-bodied, or from the center of town, or from any other location that they choose. So they would figure that out, but it would be for overflow parking. For transportation for that. Any other questions?
Well, I support exactly what they're doing. I think they do a great job every year.
All right, so we need a motion for this.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve the use of the transportation for the holiday fair for the library. Is it December 10th?
It's December 10th, yes.
I second.
And any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. Under Work Session, we've added 5.0, the Town Administrator Update. So we'll go to that now. Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Sorry, I was just getting an email, a text related to some of the, one of the things I'm going to be bringing up. So I have a couple of different issues that I wanted to raise with the board. The first is more by way of information. It doesn't necessarily require discussion unless the board requests it, which is, again, upload the draft of the Spalding lease that we are going to present to town meeting. So it's in the SharePoint, but I realize it did that late, so I can also put it on for next week as well if folks wanted to just have some time to take a look at it. But I wanted to let you know that is in the SharePoint for your review, the draft Spalding lease.
So can I ask a quick question? I hate to be an overachiever, but I did review it. And I'm just wondering, in the beginning, I thought we talked about a 10-year with two 5-year extensions. And in the very front, it says a 20-year lease.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I'm just taking a look at it. If there's a part where it says a 20-year lease, that is an error on my part, because I
It's right in the very front of it.
Okay, okay, I'll make that correction to make sure that it's very clear that it's 10 years with two 5-year extensions.
And that's actually all I have on that, believe it or not.
Where did you see that? What page?
It's right in the front.
As I see, to hold for the term of 10 years, the following terms and conditions. Okay.
But I'll double check, obviously. We can go over this on the, I'll put up, I'll scrub it and put up another with that changed, making sure that's clear on the SharePoint for next time.
All right, so we're going to add this to the agenda for the sext.
For the sext, just in prelude.
I'm not prepared to.
So there are two other kind of important issues to bring forward. The first is the word that I'm getting through our accountant from the state is that we will not have free cash certified by the time for the town meeting. Unfortunately. The state gave, said that they're really backed up with the tax, we're doing the recaps and setting the tax rates from towns, and those were being given priority for some reason. So I'm not sure exactly why that's the case, but the indication is that we are likely not to have free cash certified by the time that we get the December 13th, a special town meeting comes around. So there are a couple of options. The first option is, we could just pass over the, I believe there are seven articles, five through 11, that would be free cash articles. We could simply pass over those articles and let the town know that we'd be putting them on a subsequent town meeting once free cash is certified. And that could be either a special town meeting in May or another town meeting at some time in between now and then for free cash articles. So that's one possibility. Another possibility that the state mentioned and the accountant mentioned to me was, we could make a request that those articles be paid for out of the stabilization account. And then at a special town meeting in May, before annual town meeting, once free cash is certified, we would allocate a certain amount of free cash back into stabilization to cover those items. The third, which I, you know, I'm not in favor of, would be to reschedule in town meeting until such time as free cash is certified. So that would be a third possibility. There are other items on the special town meeting that don't require free cash. That means that they would also be booted out until such time as that special town meeting takes place. So those are the options. I, you know, I think, quite frankly, I've listed them in the order of my preference, which is, I think, just passing over the articles and saying that we will bring them on in a subsequent town meeting once free cash is certified, I think makes sense personally, but that's just one of the options. So I wanted to get the kind of the temperature of the Board of Selectmen so that we're not surprised and having to figure out what to do on the 13th if this actually happens. So we could decide what to do about those options.
So Chad and Teresa, Chad, what are your thoughts of those three options? Or do you have an option number four?
Yeah, I'll just give you a checkbook and you can write out all those checks for them.
I take it back.
My thoughts are that I personally believe that a lot of these free cash items really are annual town meeting items as opposed to special town meeting items. I honestly feel that there's a couple of them that are in there that really should be on the capital, on the capital plan. So my thought is to really scrub the meeting and take it up in the new year. That's my thought.
Of the entire meeting or just the money articles? Because there are other articles that are not.
Other articles are bylaw changes and that kind of stuff. And do we really want to schedule a special town meeting to get everybody, to get a quorum to vote on bylaw issues?
They're not all bylaw issues.
Yeah, there are, so out of a total of, I believe it was 18 articles, so seven of them are free cash articles. The others are
I think there's only one bylaw, right?
There's a general bylaw about the non-criminal disposition for the lighting. There's a zoning bylaw change. There's also several water department and cemeteries funding, funding issues that are being voted on. And there's some, there's the PEG access authorization, the transfer of PEG access, the fourth quarter PEG access funding. So there are, I don't think it would be a wasted town meeting if we didn't do the free cash articles, but I do hear what you're saying. But that's a, there's a chunk of the work that we're going to do. And so taking off almost half would certainly lessen.
Well, now that you mention it, I didn't think of the PEG access and I didn't think of the water, because those are important financial moves that they do need to make, that we need to make. So I say that we pass over, then my, you know, I think we should pass over the free cash issues and just go as planned.
Teresa, what are your thoughts?
We if the town makes a decision that they're not going to support the issues at the next meeting, then we don't have to come up with the money, right?
Well, so there are some, so several of these articles are things that we are going to have to pay for. The increased insurance, it's about $29,000.
Some of them were, yep, it wasn't like the town can vote for or against, okay.
Yeah, well, I mean, we're going to have to find out a pay. So the increased insurance, the accountant's fees, the elevator repair, the energy costs. Those are things that we're going to have to figure out a way to pay for.
Yeah, the fever did break. Yeah, and that elevator, we need that money now. That has to be done within 30 days, right? Didn't that have to be done by?
That has to be done for them, so that if we don't do it at town meeting, there are options. We can actually ask the FinCom, the FinCom has an emergency reserve specifically designed for these things that come up that are not in the budget, that are emergencies. So we could ask the FinCom for emergency reserves or we could, you know, try to absorb it into an existing line until the special town meeting and hope that the town sees that as an item that's worth funding from free cash.
I think that's the only one that has a deadline such as that, correct?
That's the only one that has a really hard deadline that it's tough for us to dodge around. Everything else is, I mean, leaky roofs have deadlines, but they're not like, they're not first of the year kind of deadlines.
Yeah, so I think we do, as we said, there's some things that we just have to go forward with. So I think we do have to have the meeting. But the only one, I think everything else on those money issues, other than the elevator, we can't hold off on at this time. But I don't see any harm on putting the elevator on the warrant and just put it under free cash.
Well, we can until free cash is certified, that's the problem.
Oh, I mean, what was the option that you gave? I'm sorry, not free cash.
Stabilization. The other option is, if the Board of Selectmen would like, I can actually try to make a request to the FinCom between now and town meeting for that $8,000. And then we would know whether or not the FinCom would be willing to appropriate that out of their emergency reserve.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, why don't we do that? And they have a meeting before, we're meeting again before the town meeting. So they could approve it before that meeting.
And then we'll know.
Okay. That's the only one I'm worried about is that $8,000.
So let's do two motions. Let's do them. Do we need a motion for this?
I think it would be good to have a motion.
All right, so the first motion would be to pass over, I think it was Articles 5 through 11, free cash articles.
I wouldn't, I don't think we need a motion for that.
Oh, okay.
I think we could just do that at the town meeting.
Okay, all right.
But I do think we need a motion to make a request for me to go to the
All right, so that was my second motion. It's all right. We don't need the first. All good. All right, so we are going with Eric's option one as far as town meeting goes. We're going to go forward with the town meeting, pass over the free cash articles, and they will be on a town meeting subsequently. All right, as opposed to paying things out of stabilization or rescheduling the town meeting. All right, so we need a motion to approach the FinCom to see if we can use the, it's not called the emergency fund, but
FinCom Emergency Reserve.
The Reserve Fund, the FinCom Reserve Fund for the elevator repair. So is there a motion?
I make a motion that we direct Eric to meet, work with the Finance Committee to see if we can get emergency funding for the elevator repair that must be completed by the end of December.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Moss, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Cal, yes. All right, anything else?
Great, so the second issue that came up is a little bit of, I have a little bit of consternation about this, but when the Board at the last Board of Selectmen meeting voted with regards to the energy contract for the town to enter into, they voted a specific amount based on the documentation that we were given. The contract that came over unfortunately had some transposed numbers.
Before or after our meeting or it came over to?
Came over to be asked subsequent to the meeting. Had numbers that were different, it appears that they were transposed, but numbers that were different from the amount that the Board voted on. Unfortunately, it was different such that it was slightly higher than I was authorized to sign. So I couldn't sign the contract. And I reached out to try to clarify it. And unfortunately, by the time the clarification happened, the pricing spiked because there's such a timing. So that's, I apologize for that, you know, but I'm not sure, just the way that it played out, I'm not sure there was anything that could have been done about it because of those transposed numbers. So I am wondering if the Board would be willing to authorize me to sign a contract at below a certain price point, the lowest three-year contract that we receive, below a certain price point, so that if that, so I could, because I don't have quotes yet.
When the bids come back.
So when the bids come back, I can just sign it without, necessarily needing a specific number on a vote. Does that make sense?
And so the value I would guess would be anything equal to or below what we had previously authorized.
And that, so we can certainly do that. Or, you know, my concern is, if the market has changed and the prices are higher, then we would just have to sit and wait until maybe the market corrected. But that's, you know, that's, you know, it's, would be up to the Board.
Well, my thought, I would want to see the numbers if it was higher, I guess.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Question about what we were actually paying now from what the municipal rate was, whatever it was, R2 or
Yeah, the G2, and the G2 rate is slightly over 21 cents starting December 1st.
Which is Thursday, right?
Yeah, and the residential rate was 22 cents for unit cell. But we are paying the G2 rate.
Right. And what was the rate that we were looking at? Was it 1.4?
It was right around 15. It was like 1.49, something, right around 15 cents.
4.46, I remember.
Yeah, I I think, okay, so what was the differential between the current rate? Could we do it by differential if it's this much less per unit or?
I think it's completely, knowing that if we do nothing, we're going to be paying the 21 cents starting on Thursday. You could authorize me to sign a contract at any kind of threatened. We're unlikely to get a rate probably lower than the rate we got before, but maybe. But if you say, I authorize you to sign anything below 16 cents or anything, the lowest rate you can find for a three-year term below a certain threshold, then that would enable me to sign it when I get the documents.
So think about this, how about if we, because there was three-year and there was also one year? So I think that if the three-year is the delta or lower than the previous, sign the three-year. If the delta is, you know, if we get, you know, 0.5 savings or 0.4 or whatever, sign a one.
Remember, the one years were higher rate, though.
They were a higher rate, so the delta's not going to be as good. But it would allow us then to go for a bid in a year.
That's true.
Because who knows what's going to happen with rates?
Well, I am hopefully, if we can get this solar project off the ground, it's all going to be weird.
Why, right, but that's that's why I'm thinking go one year, but it's probably two years till we see a, on a solar project.
Well, I think
Sign and then they install.
Right, their goal, I think, would be to have this installed by this time next year.
That's good.
They want to be on spring town meeting? But that's a whole, so I should probably, I want to tell the whole Board this. I've been meeting with a solar company about canopies, I think I told the Board when I had the preliminary meeting. They came back with their three locations where they thought solar canopies would make sense for both the town and for the company. One was solar canopies at the police station over the lower bays where the cruisers park is an appropriate place for solar canopies for Um, is a appropriate place for solar canopies from for for uh kind of distancing and things. Another was. The council on aging in library parking lot. Um, and the third was to put some solar canopies along the edge of the highway department. On the right, if you come up to the building, along the edge of the property, along the edge of the pavement, where people kind of park their their vehicles during the day. Um, the goal of the project would be. To uh build out enough solar capacity in those three locations to offset the electrical needs of all the town buildings. Um, and it it would be uh because it's a, so this would be a twenty-five-year. Power purchase agreement, they would install the canopies for free. Um, and then we purchase power from them for a specific rate. I think the the uh the rate I saw was between eleven and twelve cents per kilowatt hour. Um, we'd be locked into that rate for twenty-five years. And that would. Quite frankly, be a a a huge savings.
That's a no-brainer.
Yeah, so that's a project that I'm working on. With this uh solar company, but then I that's a little bit different than this, because this is a much more immediate.
Right, this is for, well, I I guess my thought is, if if in fact we do wind up doing the canopies. We we would need the relief that that the aggregation would give us for a year anyway. We could sign on for a three-year rate. But if we don't, if the rate is too high. If the rate isn't as favorable as what we were presented with, then I would say at least do the one year. Um, I don't, new rates.
When, who, uh, how, where did the juxtaposition of the numbers occur?
When when they sent me over the contract to sign, that the board had authorized me to sign. The numbers that I was submitted that were juxtaposed such that the rate was higher than the one that the board had authorized.
Right, so they made the error when they sent you the contract to sign.
Yes.
So I think you just do. The whoa. You made the error and hold them to the numbers we agreed to.
But it's a bid thing.
Yeah, we 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 tried and then uh uh by the time that we got the corrected numbers, the company who had provided that number said, which is Constellation. Um, said. Sorry, that's you you're you're.
We're out of the.
You're out of the window when those numbers were good.
And they have to, they have to go back to bid to see the next set of numbers.
And the rates unfortunately right now.
It's almost like.
I agree with you, Teresa, but because I hadn't signed anything and it was just a bid. But I I, you know, if I had signed the document and sent it over to them. I I I, the reason why I didn't was because I felt like I wasn't authorized to sign.
Yeah, but it's almost like they did it on purpose to get more time. I mean, I know they didn't, but. It seems sneaky to me.
Yeah, I mean, i- i- if they had wanted to give us a worse rate, they could have just given us one, though, you know what I mean? Like they. You know, we were, we were looking at the rates for the first time. If they, if it was a two cents over, they would, we would have seen a rate of two cents over. They knew there was a competitive bid. Because we got it from multiple companies, so my my, the 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 rates are very volatile right now for lots of reasons. And so that's why they're only good for a very short window when they give them to you.
And we need to be locked into a new rate or we're stuck with Unitel for for a year, right?
Well, no, we could, we can do this whenever. So if you offer, if you say to me, we're not gonna take a rate less than fifteen and a half cents. Then I would ask Ross to to talk to these people and say, keep. Give us the daily rates. I want to drop slow fifteen and a half cents, we'll sign the contract if it ever does.
That's that's what I think we should do.
Now, and the the downside of that is. That it may not, like if the rates have gone up, it we we, they may not be that low anymore and we might just be sitting on the Unitel rate all winter.
Right, but we have, we have, what are the current Unitel rates right now?
On Thursday.
As of Thursday, it'll be twenty one cents.
Right, so.
Now, is that commercial for the for the um?
That's the G two rate first. The residence is a twenty-two.
Okay.
And and the commercial's twenty-one.
And and we have not gotten the residential bid yet.
Right, that's not, that that's a, that's a different process. They're putting together the, they they just got approved a a a a um. Pittsburgh's most recent submittal was approved, and so they are using that template to put together ours in the hopes it'll be a quicker approval process than Pittsburgh's was.
So so I agree with Madam Chair. I think we should put a a a number stipulation on the three-year and if if not, then we would go with a one-year. I think that's our best option. Just a lot.
I think it needs to be point oh five or better.
So you, so it should be sixteen kilowatt, sixteen cents a kilowatt hour?
Or better.
Or better, and otherwise to go with a one, one year.
If it, if the one year is less than point two one.
Okay. I agree with that.
I'm okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
I'm gonna reserve the right to maybe come back on the sixth, if I don't like.
And that is okay, it's only a week away. So, um, all right, so uh, do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, I think the motion would be to authorize the town administrator to enter into an an energy agreement. So long as the as the rate is below sixteen cents kilowatt hour.
Three year.
For a three-year term or below twenty-one cents kilowatt hour for a one-year.
I make a motion that we allow the town administrator to enter into an agreement. As long as the energy rate is below, a three-year agreement is low, long as the rate is below sixteen. Per per kilo- kilowatt hour, uh, twenty or one-year agreement is long for, as long as the rate is lower than twenty-one. Per kilowatt hour.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Teresa, how do you vote?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. Anything else?
Uh, that would be it for me, Madam Chair, thank you.
That was a hot seat for you tonight.
Apologize, that is not, uh, the um, the, I I wanted to let the members of the Board of Selectmen know that the the Fire Chief has invited. All of the members of the board to um. The Fire Department Dinner. That's being held uh 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 this Friday.
Do you have more?
I will, I can give you the the uh, the details offline if it once we're.
And I'm assuming we would need to.
I believe there is a request for R S V P.
Okay, all right, so if you could send the.
Yes, I I will.
All right, well, thank you, Chief Shepherd.
And that's it.
All right.
Thank you. Chief Shepherd.
All right, so um. Uh, next is, our our next meeting is December sixth at six P M. Then December thirteenth at seven P M for the special town meeting here in Town Hall. Um, and possibly December twentieth, six P M if we need that meeting. Otherwise, we'll go to January for the so first and third, and I think um next week. At next week's meeting, we'll look at meetings for January, February, March, maybe April. Um, yeah, uh, so that, and the meetings are scheduled, because there are vacation days and, well, holidays.
Holidays.
Um, school vacation weeks, so we should be there as well. With that, all right, um.
Announcements.
Uh, no, um, is there a motion to review and sign payroll and bills payable warrants out of session?
I make a motion that we review and sign payroll warrants out of session.
Second.
All those in favor, Teresa?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes, and now it's time for announcements. So, um, Teresa, I believe you had an announcement to make.
Yes, I do, um. Um, there, I just want to make an announcement. Uh, for those of you who don't know it, there's been several changes uh to veterans' benefits. So to help the veterans in the area, uh, one of the Department Services Office Office from the Natu- National Headquarters. Is uh of disabled American veterans is going to be coming to uh. The V F W sixty-five thirty-eight at ten A M this Saturday. Uh, he'll be, he's available to answer questions. He's gonna go over. Um, the recent cha- changes, and after he goes over the changes and answers the questions on the new benefits, he's also gonna. Open up anybody who would like to have a claim uh for disability and take it right down. Uh, to the National Office. So anybody, even if you have a claim, that might uh and. Wanna see if you can extend your claim and get greater benefits, or you wanna learn about some more benefits that might be available. We ask all in the community that have time to join down at the V F W at ten o'clock on Saturday.
Other day, December third or Saturday, December tenth?
December tenth.
Not this Saturday, but next week's Saturday.
Oh.
Is that, is that true?
I'm sorry, I said this Saturday. It's next Saturday. Thanks for the. Yep.
All right, at ten A M?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Um, any other announcements? I have none. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn at four forty-seven P M.
Second.
All those in favor?
Teresa A. Marsh, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Kell, yes. All right, thank you very much, you guys.